Trying to keep my green stuff from.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone should have received the minutes from the meeting six seventeen. Any amendments? Nearing non-minute stand is approved. All right, handful of the Charlie during resolution part two thousand twenty four oh nine.
We have a part-time police officer Kevin Jones. It's the recommendation of the chief, the mayor, and me as your legal counsel to terminate Kevin Jones while he is in his probationary period. He's not going to complete his probationary period, so since counsel appoints, counsel must also remove. So there is a written resolution asking you to terminate. East Camp Police Officer, part-time probationary Police Officer Kevin Jones. I think his last day would be June thirtieth, correct Chief?
I made it today, so I just made it July first.
Yeah, effective immediately. So it asks for a resolution and vote on that, please.
Okay, I'll give the roll call.
I mean, I can read it if you want me to. He just, he hasn't worked a single shift.
So it's just a.
We hired him.
It's just a form of, it's a formality to get him off the roster.
He hasn't worked a single shift.
There was actual issue or.
Yeah, I would say the same thing.
More of a roster.
What happened, he never showed up.
All right, roll call. For who? Counsel?
Gay.
Van? Yes. Starman?
Yes.
Plus?
Isn't it, we're going to get full calls, so we complain about something that happened.
No, no. He just said it never worked. I have indicated to the mayor and the fiscal officer, I'm required to go to another meeting, so I'll with counsel's permission, and then excuse myself.
Goodbye.
Have fun.
Thanks, Charlie. All right, takes us to public speak, Sue.
I am here tonight, and I brought, brought Robles with me tonight. I screened the meeting of the seventeenth, and when Ed mentioned pickleball, there was a lot of, what I saw, a lot of people going, what? What's pickleball? I ran the program over at the Louisville Y for almost six years, pickleball. So I brought Ed some information tonight. Steve Passe, who went to East Camp High School, is an ambassador for pickleball. He brought pickleball to Stark County. He taught it when he was a school teacher. Pickleball is a combination of tennis, badminton, and ping pong. And it shoots with paddles, it looks something like this, and a pickleball ball, looks like a wiffle ball. Outdoor pickleball balls have bigger holes, this is an indoor ball, okay? Put a court up, an outdoor court, from scratch, off the ground, would be about a hundred thousand dollars. If you use an existing place, which is what I'm assuming you're talking about, the tennis courts up there. You're probably looking, depending on what you do, if you use permanent nets with poles in the ground, probably around thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. And that's having Jeffreys come in and lay the asphalt. When I talked to Steve, he highly suggested that the road crew, whoever it may be, trying not to put asphalt down themselves, they did that down in Melbourne, and they had to replace it twice. It's a very intricate thing to do. But it's a great sport. It is the largest growing sport in the world right now. There are more pickleball players in the world than combined all other sports together. Because it could be played by anybody. They are teaching it in elementary schools. We had a guy over at the Louisville Y that was ninety-two years old to play. So anybody can play it, it's very, very popular. But Steve is an ambassador, he will come in and consult for free from start to finish.
We're all but done.
Pardon me?
We're all but done. The tennis court is now a pickleball court. We have the equipment somewhere in the office. We don't need to even buy anything, all they got to do is strengthen.
Is the as, is the asphalt laid up there?
Yeah, it's tennis court, the old tennis, the old tennis court.
You're going to use concrete?
It ain't concrete, blacktop.
Going to turn a tennis court into a pickleball court.
I, I understand that. Did you lay new asphalt or no?
No.
No?
No, we're just going to seal it, fill the cracks and seal it.
Are, do you have permanent poles in the ground for the net that you're going to use? I'm sorry, I did not know that.
Yeah, that's all done.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for two or three meetings.
Well, I know you have.
I brought it up.
We think the pickleball net is shorter than the tennis court net. So if we have to.
It should be thirty-six inches on each end and thirty-four in the middle.
Yeah, but I don't know how long, from one side to the other.
It's got to be as wide as the court.
The whole length? Well, yeah.
No, not the length, the width.
No, the width, yeah.
Yeah.
We just didn't know if that, it was the same as a tennis court net. I think, we think it's a little bit smaller.
A pickleball court is smaller, it's narrower and shorter. Oh, the net? Well, it's as wide as the court and what I told you, the thirty-six and thirty-four. I apologize, I did not know you guys were that far.
Yeah, all we got to do is just mount the net and paint the stripes.
Okay. I, really, I didn't, I know you've been talking about it, I didn't come in here blasting like I was, you know, the savior.
Once in a while, your ball might come down and hit a crack and shoot off the left or something. Besides, Ed should be okay.
Well, that's great. That's great, I sincerely apologize.
A little bigger, appreciate the research.
Yeah, thanks. I, I've never played, so that was interesting, shooting paddles and balls and stuff too.
My, my neighbor walked up, their son, and he, he said, you know, why don't you guys strike that up for pickleball or something? So I come in here and told Ed about it.
I, I know he had mentioned it, and at the meeting last Monday, he said, start to talk about pickleball next year. So I didn't know where it was, I, I really did not know. I apologize for not investigating it further and getting better information.
Good, we appreciate you doing that, I mean, it's good information to have. All right, takes us into committee reports, service.
Things under roads, we installed twenty-five mile an hour signs on Orchard Street by Hope. One going each way. Took thirteen loads of trees and dirt and et cetera to C and D. Underwater, we have nothing to report right now. Park, the pure removal and trimming project has been complete until fall, when they can trim the oak trees down there. Storm drain, storm drain project is done, installed a new storm drain down there, and ran underneath the track there. The new blacktops put down already, where it had been tore up for that project. The walking track has been prepped for sealing. We're supposed to sign around the track, stated the track will be temporarily closed for a day or two, for it to dry. The date's not set on that yet. Now, the pickleball project, the cost to fill the cracks and to seal, and to seal it, the blacktop, would be about sixty-five, six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. I guess the question would be, first of all, is there money available for that? And the second one would be asking counsel to approve that tonight to get that done. Under buildings, we're preparing service department parking lot out back for expansion. Expansion is we're just cleaning up out, out back, all our bays and everything. And then we're going to install along the back wall, we throw out some trees and stuff for barricades and stuff. Just kind of clean up around there. Any questions?
All right, takes us to safety.
All right, since the last meeting, we've been extremely busy. Last two weeks have been off the hook. We had a total of ninety-six call records since the last meeting. Fifty-eight of them had been traffic stops. We had two animal complaints, a lockout, four suspicious persons, indoor vehicles, two assist outside agency, six follow-up investigations, three nine-one-one hangup calls, alarm drop, a mental, a theft. And we had a shots fired call, which involved one of our officers. That's still under investigation, so if anybody wants to see me afterward, I can explain to you what happened.
That's since the last one?
No, this is the last.
Oh, that is the last one.
That's pretty much what we did.
We're definitely seeing them out all over the place.
Are, are, are any of the traffic stops turning up like drugs or anything like that? Is that becoming more common?
Yes. This is. We've gotten meth, we've gotten morphine, we've gotten oxycodone, OxyContin, cocaine, a little bit of marijuana.
Has there been anything with the fentanyl issues at all?
I don't know yet, we still have stuff that's in the crime lab being tested. Yeah, wouldn't surprise me if it doesn't come back on some of the stuff. I can't give you affirmative on that until we get the results you like. We've had a couple of search warrants too. Some stuff, we have issued lawful warrants. I'm trying to serve them. Been busy.
Yeah, been productive, but we've stepped it up the last couple of weeks.
Been productive, but we've stepped it up the last couple of weeks. Good job, chief.
Sounds like you're busting her out.
Yeah. Is, has, has anything Mixon was talking about, too, on the night shift? Have we got anywhere with that?
Not as of yet.
Not as of yet?
We are really thin this week, we're having a hard time covering all the shifts. After this week, we should be good. And then I have scheduled some overlapping shifts for later in the month, but nothing for this week. I'd like to have had one for 4th of July, and at least I'll come out and.
Did you, the new, the new gang board, that's your last meeting?
Yes, actually, he'll be out, sways him. He's supposed to be out tomorrow night, that problem, he won't be his last night of training. And then, he's also working a full-time job, so his availability's gonna be limited. He knows the 32-hour rule, so he's promising one or two nights a week, so we'll see.
Thanks, chief.
Appreciate it.
Takes us to judicial.
Got before you resolution, R 2024 dash zero eight. This is a resolution that the auditor of state local government services is requiring the village to pass. The mayor and council established a court capital improvement fee on the traffic violations. And this particular fee, when collected, has to be deposited into its own special revenue account. The village does not have that revenue account set up in its UAN software, so we have to request the establishment of that particular fund. And in order to do so, we have to fill out a form requesting the fund, what we're gonna use it for, where the money's coming from, and we also have to pass this particular resolution. So that's the reason that this is in front of you, it's just a housekeeping issue. So with that, I'll read resolution, R 2024 dash zero eight, a resolution by the village of East Canton requesting approval to establish a court capital improvement fund from the auditor of state care of local government services. The East Canton Village Council, Stark County, Ohio, met in regular session on the first day of July 2024, with the forum of the members present, whereas the council of the village of East Canton approved and passed ordinance 2024 dash zero two, which amended and updated the mayor's court fine and fee schedule for all violations within the jurisdiction of the mayor's court for the village of East Canton, Stark County, Ohio. And whereas ordinance 2024 dash zero two established a court capital improvement fee as allowed under the provisions of Ohio revised code, section 1901 dot 26 B1A, of which allows the court to charge a fee in addition to all other court fees on the filing of each criminal cause, civil action, or proceeding, or judgment by confession. And whereas the fees collected for the capital improvement fee shall be used for acquiring and paying for special projects of the court, including but not limited to the acquisition of additional facilities or the rehabilitation of existing facilities, the acquisition of equipment, the hiring and training of staff, community service programs, mediation, or dispute resolution services, the employment of magistrates, the training and education of judges, acting judges and magistrates, and other related services. Now, that particular section and those particular areas are directly from the Ohio revised code. Be it now therefore resolved, that the East Canton Village Council, Stark County, Ohio, is hereby authorized, East Canton Village fiscal officer do all things necessary to accomplish the purpose and intent of this resolution.
Sue. Second. Are we really expected to use any of the money we're setting aside?
Absolutely. Sir. Yes.
Trouble is coming for you.
Yeah, there's plenty of opportunities. This room right here is the mayor's court chambers, and that fund could be used to do any repairs or upkeep renovations to this room. We also have plenty of opportunities in other areas to use that fund.
Do you want to get the driver's license reader or something? That's under the computerized.
Yeah.
The computerization fund, that's a separate fund.
That's set up as well.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, roll call, Collins. Baloo.
Yeah.
Conso.
Yay.
Dan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yay.
Plus.
Yay.
Yep. Anything for grants for tonight?
I have not heard anything from the loan yet. I've not heard anything from the other colleges approached, but I just left a message on their machines, basically, so I think an in-person visit is warranted, which, my earliest convenience, I'm gonna do.
Appreciate that, thank you. Chief, you have something for grants?
Yeah, we received the body armor grant this year again. It's only, I can't remember the exact number, it's right around three grand.
32, I think, 3200. Yeah, 80, 20, right?
No, 75, 25. Our grant was only for 26 something. The number I gave you in the email was, was that was the full 100%. When we take our 25% off of it, that'll give us pretty close, I think it was 2,600.
Something like that. The reason why we got that less of amounts, because we got the grant last year.
Yeah.
Three, it should buy three, about, say, two or three. And speaking of the computers, the computers we bought for the N car, they're all updated to up-to-date specs. The only thing we are waiting on now are the power cords, the power cords were back ordered. I talked to Phil, and he said that they have been shipped, so they're on their way. As soon as they get here, then we'll be using, start transitioning over.
Existing mounts working a little bit?
I'm hoping so. They look like they will, but. The only thing we're gonna have to figure out is a place to how to mount the printer, but Phil says he's got an idea on how to do it, so.
Okay.
Once he gets the cords and he'll finish, help, move, figure out something.
Takes us into finance.
Finance, I'd like to make a motion for invoices, about $32,921.59, and present my request for that.
Second.
Roll call, Collins.
Yeah.
Baloo.
Yeah.
Conso.
Yay.
Dan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yay.
Plus.
Yay.
Also want to make a motion to approve the June 2024 bank reconciliation, and present my request for that as well.
Second.
Roll call, Collins.
Yeah.
Baloo.
Yeah.
Conso.
Yay.
Dan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yeah.
Plus.
Yay.
This foster guys also had in the meeting packet, the incorporations report through this week.
Yeah, it goes to the end of seven, eight, 2024. Reason for that is some of the invoices that you approved, the payment of them are scheduled to be done along with the keepers of July, for those incorporates, those expenditures. And I will bring in before council, at the next council meeting, should be the final batch of capital improvement projects to be approved and the mouths.
Kurt, you have some information on the new video?
Oh, yeah. If you scroll through your meeting packet, go clear to page 48. State of Ohio auditor came out with new mandatory requirements for fraud training, and it's for everybody, village council, the mayor, all of our employees, and everybody. We've got 90 days to have it completed. We have to have it done by September 28th, 2024. They've got some on-demand videos that we have to watch, and then they will issue once it's all done and complete, they'll issue a certificate. Once the certificate is issued to you, please forward it to me. The auditor will be looking at this training during our next audit cycle, which ends December 31st of this year. And it's, it's for everybody, and even new hires, all new hires, all existing employees, all council people, and if you stay on council, it's required every four years. I'll be passing out more information. Another thing to get ready for is, it's time to start a road through workplace training again. Some of you guys skated out of it last year and didn't, or last, yeah, last year and didn't complete it. We were lucky, they did approve us, sort of gave me a letter acknowledging that everybody didn't complete it, but they gave it to us, so if you're watching for that, we'll have road through workplace training, it'll be online, so.
So I do see a link here, so you said you're gonna send out more information?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I tried to get on it the other day, and they hadn't had everything set up yet. It was a couple of days early, but I thought maybe they might have everything on. But yeah, that auditor.gov trainings fraud, that should link you right in there.
Kurt, when's the road through workplace, when does that do?
By the end of the year, ain't it?
No.
No. It's like August or September or something like that, it's, we got about two months.
I would just ask that the managers make sure that your employees get it done well in advance. Chief, you have the bigger challenge, because you have a lot of part-time officers, so we need to corral them ahead of time, let's not wait till the last week or two.
As soon as I get, get.
I'll get it.
I reached out to Lisa, but she's on vacation, so it's gonna be the same format and same as what we did last year. It'll take an hour, you'll have two hours, but everybody, Ed will have two hours, the mayor and I will have two, and everybody else will just have an hour. This doesn't include council also.
What if we got it through a employer already?
They, as long as you got, like, an attendance thing, they should accept that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Derek, you don't mind sending that occurred, just so we have it for workers that agree?
Have you already sent out the links to both of those?
No. Well, you've got the link here, if you open up your email packet that I sent you for the meeting tonight, and go down to the fraud training thing, it's got a couple links. Yeah. If you click on it, it takes you right to the auditor state, go clear down the bottom like page, what, 48 or 49? Kind of keep going.
Right there. Those are the two links.
Right here. Yeah, if you click on that first one, it should take you to a page that looks like that, with the auditor state. Have something to add whenever.
Yeah, we got one more, Ruth, in the finance side.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was, the last work session, we talked about several different items. Curtis requesting council's approval. We just talked earlier today about the crack fill and seal the tennis and basketball courts for $6,520. We have the individual email address establishment for all village employees not to exceed 5,000. That is to create the village email addresses that would be, what, village eastcanton.gov, right?
No, it'll be eastcanton.gov.
Eastcanton.gov, okay.
Just eastcanton.gov is what we apply for.
All right.
So that's gonna be an update to the, I know we all got our own email, we can kind of grab laptops and things like that, but it's just, so we all get the different email address?
Yeah, it's basically gonna take away those Outlook, we're gonna do away with those Outlooks, and we'll link all of the new email addresses to the Outlook accounts and everything. I met with the gentleman on Tuesday last week, and see, there's certain requirements when we set up email addresses, we have to be able to archive them. Like, say, you guys decide not to run for village council, and somebody new is elected, and they come onto council, we have to archive your old emails for a certain period of time, and they don't really establish the time, it's just a usable time. So six months to a year is what anybody would probably normally consider that. So we have to be able to archive that, we have to be able to deactivate that council email address, and then issue a new one, and this will all take, this will all handle all that stuff. It won't be just a simple Outlook email address and everything. We're looking at about 30 or 31 email addresses for the village, and we're gonna have to buy some new Microsoft. The reason I said $5,000, just the email addresses alone are gonna cost us around $1,500 a year. We've gotta buy some new Microsoft Office 365 licenses to establish these emails and a few other things.
Kurt, do we have the ability, if somebody leaves, to shut that off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have control, we have complete control over everything, so.
Yes.
And then, that's, that's the first step of it, and then what we're looking at doing after that, once this is all set up, is try to set up a village internet system where we can have certain files that are accessible to council members and the department heads. One of the big things would be our ordinances. We'd like to scan all the ordinances that we have in paper copy and put them into a PDF and do individual files. Another thing that would be handy would be, like, village maps.
When you say accessible, is that accessible only, you come in and work off of this wireless router on this internet, or accessible from your home?
You'd be able to access it from your home, as long as you had a username and a password to get into it.
Have worked out all the details of that. If there's anything you have to give this wifi, I'm gonna be able to do this.
No, this is just the general wifi, this doesn't lock us up to anything.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's a little bit of the groundwork with that. And like I said, I'm just asking not to exceed $5,000 when we hit that limit, and we know what the next step is, then I'll be bringing stuff to council. And as I get more information, I'll forward it on there.
Third item on the list is the purchase of the new police cruiser by statewide Ford for quote number 240835 CG in the amount of $6,228. That was discussed at the work session. And the final item is the purchase of the new service department, 2024 F-350 supercap for ride-for-truck with accessories, as per email dated, June 21st, 2024, in the amount of $84,721.
You guys have all those quotes in your, in your packet, it's all at the, there. Don't mind the handwritten notes in blue, those are my notes, just for myself, I was trying to get together some figures and try to figure out some stuff, so. If council approves those, I'd like to have a motion in a second. If there are some that you don't approve, then we can ask them out.
I'll make a move. House, I couldn't hold them.
Roll call, Collins.
Yeah.
Baloo.
Yeah.
Conso.
Yay.
Dan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yeah.
Plus.
Yay.
Anything else?
Heidi. Well, let's jump back up to water real quick. Got an update today, right before council meeting, the water tower in the Center Street project, the loan application's been completed, it's been turned into the Ohio EPA, has not been approved yet, but we asked them, if council decides to go ahead with this project, we asked them for approval and acceptance of this loan in, so, August or September? We can push it back to October if we need to, but I think it was, we were looking for an August.
Eight August.
We're looking for an August acceptance date for the loan, if possible. The drawings, the specs, everything's available, we're ready to go, they can advertise, if I give them the word, they can advertise the dates in the paper, July 12th and 19th, hold the pre-bid meeting on July 26th, the bid opening date would be August 2nd, substantial completion date would be August 15th of 2025.
What was the project again, I'm sorry?
It's the water tower rehabilitation, the painting, the.
The inside and outside.
That was the inside and.
The only thing to note is that the outside wasn't listed as being painted on this one, right?
It was, right, it wasn't a complete paint job, it was just grinding the rust spots and touching them up, it was not a complete paint job. It was rehabilitation and recoating the inside, fixing the ladder. It was rehabilitation and recoating the inside, fixing the ladder. I can't remember what all the other stuff was.
The valves and the line on Center Street.
Yep. But the substantial completion date would be August 15th of 2025 and the final completion date would be August 29th of 2025. But that's where that stands. If council wants to move forward with that, I would ask for a motion and a second to vote. If you have any discussions, if you want to push it back.
I mean, I think we've been talking about this for quite a while. It's something we have to get done, I mean, it's, I think it's about time. Anybody else have any questions? I know we had a discussion on, I'm making motion to move forward.
Second.
Roll call Collins.
Yeah.
Baloo?
Yeah.
Conto?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes.
Carmen? Buss?
Yeah.
Anything else for finance? Access to other, Chief, you said you had something?
Yes, I don't know if you all were aware, but every year through the last couple of years, we've had to do 24-hour continuous professional training. In recent years, it's all been on the computer, we can do it online. This year, I just learned the other day that they're not going to have any online, which kind of threw a wrench into my plans because now I have to find place to get everybody 24 hours. I did have a conversation with Carroll County. They are trying, they're scrambling to try to put together the training in-house and we have been invited to go there for free, other than paying for the wages. We also have access to the Stark County training facility, so I'm going to be looking into that. My goal was to do it as cheap as possible to get it done. I don't, I don't know what their reasoning behind why they can't have it on the computer this year. They started out with one class and now for some reason, I don't know if it's a computer issue they're having or what, they're not offering it all online, so we're going to have to send people to train. And they just told us now and it's July, so.
It's going to be done by the end of the year, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah, your wife's going to be in the same boat. Well, she's down there, they're trying to put it together.
They'll have a couple of different sessions.
Yeah, hopefully. When we go down to Carroll County, the way I heard it is if you come down there, you'll get it all, all in one shot, the whole 24 hours and you'll be done. I'll have to get, see what, since we're tied into the Stark County Law Enforcement Training Center, I'll have to get with their command dot over there and see what they have left to offer. But we'll get, I just want to let you guys know in case there's some kind of expense doing it now, since they decided to tell us in July that they're not going to have it on the computer. But I do have officers going to other training, which will count towards it. And their training that they're going to is free, so that helps.
Mandatory, so I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, well, they started really cracking down on it last year. If you didn't have it done, they were suspending your commission and you weren't allowed to function as a law enforcement officer until you had it all done. That stemmed from a lawsuit from up in Cleveland that they were, they sued the state for not enforcing that. For years, we had to do it, but nobody ever paid attention to it.
Anything else for other? If not, wanted to request counsel, consider going into an executive session pursuant to ORC 12122G1 appointment, promotion or and/or compensation.
So good.
Roll call Collins.
Yeah.
Baloo?
Yeah.
Conto?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yeah.
Buss?
Yeah.
Sure. It's okay, I just have counsel, Kurt, myself.